Twenty twenty one, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. We'll move on to the roll call this evening. I do know that Councilmember Richards is not going to be able to be here this evening. For the rest of you, just a quick reminder. When I call out your name, please be sure to state your current location for the eve- for the meeting this evening. Councilmember Dill.
Present, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Kibble.
Here, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Present, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Walton.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Mayor Pellchat, also City of South Lyon. Thank you, guys. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from February twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
At least on page, page four, second to last sentence in the the bottom there, says Councilmember Kurtzwell asked if anything that is down, it's a it should read anything that is done will be audited by Plant Moran. And then on page seven, about a quarter of the the way up from the the bottom. It says, which is when Mr. Schroder volunteered to add triple pane windows. That's should be spelled P A N E. And then two sentences after that says Councilmember Kennedy then stated there is sixty houses. That should read, there are sixty houses.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not done. And then on page ten, about a third of the way down. He further stated, the city has been around, it reads for hundreds of years, it should read a hundred and fifty years. And there is plenty of time left to see when it will sell. He then stated, and what I said, and I'd like to get on the record, is speaking as one of seven, the city isn't interested in land speculation. And that's everything I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Did I see a hand there? Sorry. There you go, Councilmember Dill. Give me, give me just a couple more seconds with it up, because I never know where it's coming from. So, thank you.
I was just going to move the minutes amended.
One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passing.
Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Just a couple of light ones. On page two of four of the check register, at the bottom, there's a Bank of New York melon, and it's for a project, and that was kind of, or actually, it says projects. I was hoping those projects might be identified. I'm assuming they might be the water tank, but I'd like to know for certain.
The Bank of Mallon, I'm sorry, which page?
Two of four.
Two of four, okay. I believe that those are the the bond payments and the D F, the D W R F payment. Let me just find that really quick. Yes, those were, one is for the D W R F, there was a principal payment due as well as interest. And for the two thousand and three bond, it was just interest that was due for, they were both due by April first.
Okay, and one more on page two of five for the invoice for General Ledger Contractor Steel. It's a three-quarter inch plate with a four-inch hole. Is this is this built for road repair cover? I don't know if Doug is.
I don't, that would be a dog question.
Doug, are you there?
Here's as if he was efforting to get get back to you there, and he might have lost. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
You guys got me? Yes, I'm sorry about that. I'm here. Yes, that is for road repairs, and that's that's what that was for. In fact, we ordered a few more sheets of those. We had a couple at DPW, we just ordered a few more.
Yeah, well, I think that that's that's timely. What's the length of that? Actually, what are the dims on it?
Four by eight, I believe the sections are.
Great, okay, that'll be.
Four foot by eight foot. We have several sheets. Yep.
Perfect, okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll go ahead and move the bills. All support.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All approved. Motion passes. Move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Kennedy?
Move the agenda.
One second.
Aye. All approved.
Aye.
Councilmember Kibble, that was late. Was that an opposed vote?
Oh, no, I thought you said, I didn't hear you say aye, all approved.
You know what? That's on me. I I think I was away from my microphone. I apologize for that.
I have noticed when you twist to the to the side, it does end up cutting out quite a bit.
I will, I'll work on that.
I think we'll work through it, but.
All right, so we'll now move on. So that motion passes, we move on to the consent agenda. I'd like to just mention what's on here this evening. We have a reappointments to several commissions here. So we have Wayne Chubb for the Planning Commission, Ron Morelli, Zoning Board of Appeals, Erica Wilson, Parks and Rec, Rose Peruski, Parks and Rec, Scott Black, Parks and Rec, and Angela Baker, Board of Ethics. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved the consent agenda.
No support.
Looks like Paul's trying to unmute there. I lose audio here? City Manager Zolik, did you hear Councilmember Kibble's question?
Yes, I did. The other members had not expressed an opinion that they did not want to be in it. I'm not sure if Lisa made direct contacts, all of them, this past week or not. She's unmuted now.
Yes, we did. We contact, I'm sorry, Glenn, you cut out. I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I was just curious if you you found out whether everybody was agreeable to come back. Okay, all right, thank you.
Everybody, and everybody was still interested.
Terrific, thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor to move the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please be sure to state your name and address, and be aware of the two-minute time limit. If you are new to the virtual meetings, please try and raise your hand virtually or raise your real hand, and our city clerk Deaton will recognize you.
No one is raising their hand at the moment.
All right, with that, we'll close public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with Nate Mack.
All right, good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that the farmer's market is set to open May first. Tim Davin, David and I have been seeking sponsorships for the market season this year. One oh six South Lafayette Street, that's the former draft street building, is continuing to do demolition work on the interior of the building. When I spoke with the building department to try and get an update on their progress, Tara mentioned to me that they're going to be doing a lot of interior work, and once that's done, they're going to assess the other work that needs to be completed and submit plans once they're done with that. So just a quick update on that building, they're still working on the inside of it. As part of the, as I'm a member of the Michigan Downtown Association's Legislative and Advocacy Committee, I'll be meeting virtually with two legislators on Monday, March twenty second, just to kind of make them aware of what downtowns do, the good work that, you know, DDAs are able to do, and just kind of bring that to their attention a little bit. It's not, I haven't any planned meetings with South Lyon's legislator, but because I've met with legislators in the past, I'm going to be kind of helping people that have not done it so far, so. The DDA is looking to host Ladies Night in May, obviously with careful consideration given to social distancing and everything there. We're going to be talking about that at the board meeting, which is upcoming this Thursday, March eleventh at eight AM. At the meeting, the board is going to be doing the kind of the final approval for the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I've also kind of begun to brainstorm some ideas on how to repurpose the igloo and the greenhouses, once the businesses no longer need them because people are able to sit outside. So one of the ideas that I had was maybe do something at the farmer's market, not sure what that is yet, but maybe we could use like some sort of garden or something for people to to come and enjoy. So the winery that's been, you know, I've been providing updates on for the last few months. They have, they sent us a letter this morning. They had contacted, or they had gotten the services of an architect, and they're going to be looking to locate downtown. I don't know if I can share that information quite yet, but things are looking good. They're they're working through the process to try and get approvals for their building. So hopefully, we'll have some good news coming up soon. And then finally, the line area task force is looking at an e-commerce app to assist businesses in the downtown and throughout the city, really. So we're going to be putting together a focus group of six South Lyon businesses and six Lyon Township businesses to kind of gauge their interest in what they and how they see it could be useful to them. So yeah, that's my my report for the evening. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
I left my hand up there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. Nate, you had a few, maybe a couple of months ago, put something out asking people to join four different committees for the DDA, looking for residents to do that. And I know I sent a few people your way. I just wondered how you were doing on those committees, if people joined, if you met, how, what.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some volunteers sign up for the committees. We have a few for the design committee. I think we have three or four for the promotions committee, but our organization committee is kind of the one, the one committee that we really need members for at the moment, so.
Would you mind putting that back out again, so that I can share it with a few people? I know I had some people that were very interested in that, so.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. I'll post it on Facebook tomorrow.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? All right, great. Thanks, Nate, for the update.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the fire chief report. Chief Vogel.
Good evening, everybody. We've got some good news this week. The rescue refurb is moving along. The body was delivered from Florida. This week, they will be in painting the body and installing, so things are going quickly with that project. And lastly, I just want to touch bases on some vaccination confusion. The city of South Lyon does not distribute vaccinations. We don't plan where they'll be given, and we can't give them. This is all driven by Oakland County Health Department. There are some question why Detroit is giving out vaccinations and why South Lyon is not. Detroit has their own health department. City of South Lyon does not. We utilize Oakland County. They are in the process of, I think, really vamping this up. I think things are about to really get going here now that the Johnson and Johnson shot's been released. We received good, some word that maybe Novi is going to add another day of vaccinations. So for those of you who are frustrated, we feel it. We understand it. Just, I think in a couple of weeks, things will really be smooth. So sorry about any confusion. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Vogel, for helping set that straight. It is, it's tough. There's a lot of information out there, and people are frustrated. I totally understand it and appreciate you getting that out there. Does anyone else have anything for chiefs this evening? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Rob, have you found that the loss of that vehicle has been a real imposition for you? I mean, have you guys been getting along, or?
Well, yes, I mean, we are, we've been using the engine one. But what's interesting is four times last week, we had multiple calls at the same time, which means we almost have every vehicle somewhere in the city. I'm really anxious to get that truck back. Spend some time getting it designed with all that extra room. We are really waiting anxiously to get it back. It is interesting how busy we've gotten. How many times we've had multiple calls, how busy we are at night. And right now, we're just having to utilize the other apparatus, to the point where we almost had to use a ladder truck, which, you know, technically, we, it's not licensed, but it's it's been that busy, so.
Well, it certainly, yeah, it'll be nice when that comes back. I mean, when you overkill with the big rigs in there, that's got to be trouble.
Yeah, it's, you know, I think when this comes back, it'll be designed perfectly for the city of South Lyon and meet the needs that what we, for our medical needs.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Councilman.
All right, thanks for the update, chief. We'll move on. And Lieutenant Baki filling in for Chief Sodik tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got a few things to touch on to let everybody know what's going on with us. We recently just got our new mugshot computer, and it had to go to Clemis to get revamped and put into, this is part of the program where we couldn't use our old mugshot because it had to be updated and couldn't be updated, so we had to get a new a new tower and a new monitor, so that's in place and working. We also are going to be installing our new AFIS system, that's for the fingerprints. That's going to be installed tomorrow. We're going to get a little bit of training on that. There's a few little things that are different with that. But all in all, it's still the same system. We're adding a card reader so we can import information off driver's license quicker when we do prints. We just received our new SUV. It was outfitted last week, and the graphics were put on today. So we're real happy about that. There's a couple more little tweaks we have to do with it. I've got to get signed in, the camera signed into our server so we can use it as well as sign up for Clemis. But that'll be done hopefully tomorrow. We started our accreditation process, which is through the Michigan Association's of Chief of Police. This process is going to be a long, probably about a year, year and a half process, where basically implementing new policies, new practices, to be more transparent to the to the citizens, as well as accountability for us as a department. So we're looking forward to tackling that. And finally, we still are waiting on our phone system. Hopefully Comcast will get back with us real soon. We're hoping within these next couple of weeks. I know it was slated for, I think, last week, week and a half ago, and there was some kind of glitch in the system, but they were able to get it together, and we're looking forward to getting that implemented. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant Baki. Does anyone have any questions for Lieutenant tonight? All right, thanks. Great job filling in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Really quick, while I got a minute, can I entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Richards this evening?
I'll make the motion to excuse Councilmember Richards.
One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Walton.
Welcome.
There is no unfinished business this evening, but we will move on to the new business. Liquor license application at one thirty-five East Lake Street.
Yeah, Lisa, I believe the applicant Tom is in the attendees, if he could be brought in, I guess, I don't know, lack of better word.
He should be allowed to speak now.
Okay, just briefly, thank you, Mayor Pellchat. We brought this liquor license application before you tonight because we believe the applicant is worthy of the city's final Class C quota liquor license. The investment the property owner has put into the building will be transformational for the downtown. Rehabilitating an underutilized historic building in the downtown core not only achieves the goal of the City Council and Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors, but it'll bring about a greater sense of pride in the community. The applicant has provided all required materials to meet the ordinance. Further, the feedback I have received from department heads has been very positive. The upscale Italian restaurant with its unique third-floor dining will draw people from other communities to our downtown. This project will activate that corner of Lake Street and bring added vibrancy to the downtown and the city. After reviewing the applicant's past restaurant experience and the current proposal for Duovino, approving the resolution before you tonight, I believe is the right decision. The applicant is here to answer any questions you might have, and I'll be happy to answer anything as well.
Thanks, Nate, and I don't know if you had a hand in putting together this packet, but it was very nicely done. So, Councilmember Kibble, did you have something? Go ahead.
I do, and actually, initially, I'd like for our, the city attorney, Mamani, to, if she could weigh in on something. There's a number of when you're, when you're looking at the license itself and the relationship between the landlord and the manager of the restaurant, there's some things that seem a little bit kind of clumsy to me, and I was just kind of curious about this. Do you have any experience of how commonly a landlord is a participant to a liquor license? And how common it is for the license to become property in the event of the restaurant closing?
So it is common for there to be participants in the liquor license for the landlord, and primarily, the reason for that is if the tenant vacates the premises, the landlord wants to be able to retain that license to get a new operator or tenant.
I thought that seemed reasonable, right? Now, the the other part, though, is the, like, the duration. There seem to be so many things that we're kind of hanging on getting possession of that. Now, does that become fungible, where they can just use it to could, could the landlord at that point just simply sell it? Or does it have any kind of connection with the property itself?
Well, you can't sell or transfer a liquor license for the first, I believe, three years. It could be two years, for the first two or three years.
There's three, yeah.
Is it three years?
I believe so, yes.
And so it couldn't be transferred at that point, but there's nothing prohibiting it from being transferred after that.
Okay. All right, if you remember, the at the onset of this whole discussion, we were talking about a DDA re- in enterprise.
It is a redevelopment license. Unfortunately, you're, you can't, you don't qualify for it.
No, I get that, right. I was just kind of curious. I'd hate to see something like that where where this ended up disappearing on us, so.
So some things some communities do is they have an ordinance that requires if they were to give you, if the city were to give an applicant a Class C liquor license, it would have to stay in the community. And that's a contract between the city and the licensee. It's not clear. There's no litigation yet. We don't know how well that stands up. The Liquor Control Commission doesn't honor it. And so it would literally just be a contract agreement between you and the licensee, and if they breach, you know, you could put damages in there. You couldn't prevent the license from being transferred because the MLCC wouldn't honor your private contract with the restaurant. But you could put other damages in there. It's just a matter of, it hasn't, that issue as to whether or not you could do that has not been litigated yet. I know a lot of communities are doing it, but.
I'm actually confident that this is going to go quite well, so I I just wanted to know push came to shove, if we have any protections whatsoever. That's all. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead, sorry.
I could go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution, approving the application for a Class C quota on-premises liquor license for Duovino at Duovino LLC at one thirty-five East Lake Street, South Lyon, Michigan.
I'll support it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. New business number two this evening, purchase and installation of new controls and level sensors for the Amelia Circle lift station.
Good afternoon, good evening. Sorry, council, everybody, how's it going?
Good, good.
The lift station at Amelia Court, Amelia Circle, has a recent, has been having recent level sensor, frequent level sensor failures. This ongoing problem has been quoted for repair by our SCADA technicians at UAS. It is budgeted as a repair for this year. The controls for the lift station currently are this Moskad L. They are no longer being supported in any way. They're kind of walking away from technical support, and replacing them would probably lead us to an eBay wormhole, if you can believe that. We would have to kind of scab something together. This is the last lift station throughout the city that still has this older Moskad controller posted in Motorola Ace thirty-six hundred. I've enclosed in the packet here some examples, so you can see what we have and then what we're trying to replace it with. This expenditure can be purchased out of Capital Halle account, five nine two five five seven nine seven zero, and that quote from UIS is attached for the review. They're basically going to be the ones who give us the controls, no matter what, whoever we got it through. So I've actually asked to waive, I'm as motion one here, the approval to seek competitive bidding.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
First off, I would like to know, is that, is that in Trotters? That lift station?
Yes.
Oh.
No, that's.
No.
No.
Amelia Circle, no, it's over at Saint Charleston.
Oh, it is. Oh, man. That's really disturbing, with that being probably the youngest of all the lift stations we've got. That's disturbing. Was that a spec that we gave them to, for the install?
I can't say for sure where the spec came from on this, other than I'm not pleased with the lift station now that I've had a more thorough review of it. I have other game plans for it in terms of its design, but this being the lowest fruit is what I'm going for first, because it's caused a few overtime calls here recently in terms of level sensors and stuff like that. It's just.
Makes sense to have something reliable.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to waive section two dash two two four of the city, City of South Lyon Court of Ordinances. There's no, no gain to be had by by competitive bidding.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase and installation of the new controls and level sensors for the lift station at Amelia Circle for twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars under light item five nine two point five five seven dash nine seven zero.
No support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Doug, do you have any idea how how quickly this is going to be addressed, once, assuming it's approved here?
I am hoping, because UIS is getting fairly large, they have different divisions for different things, and this one, we got a fairly quick in and out in terms of the quotes. I'm hoping they can turn this around for us in less than four to six weeks. They said they have the parts, so that's good.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Doug this evening? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. City Clerk Deaton, another roll call vote, please. City clerk Deaton, another roll call vote, please.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes, sorry.
Hellchat?
Yes.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to the budget this evening. No one has anything for the budget this evening, okay? We'll move on to our second public comment of the evening. Please remember to state your name and address and raise a physical arm or your virtual arm. And city clerk Deaton will let us know that you're here.
No one is raising their hand.
Thank you, city clerk Deaton. We'll move on to the managers' report this evening and city manager Zellnick.
Uh, we're going to be holding our first pre-budget meeting this Thursday, March 11th at 6:00 PM. We're going to be discussing the specifics of equipment for the fire department. All of you were given a packet of information. That packet outlines the meeting format and discussion topics. I would ask you if anybody has questions regarding that to hold that off until that meeting. So everyone can get a full gist of everybody's comments and so we don't duplicate, uh, the votes, discussion items. Uh, the next item with city, uh, city council planning commission meeting that we have held, the joint meeting went very well. Looking forward to getting all those, uh, items corrected on the ordinance. And before we have a public hearing and adoption, we'll be providing everybody an updated copy. Uh, also, um, we have an upcoming city council agenda where we will be discussing the mural ordinance. And that will be going before planning commission. Each of you have already been supplied a copy of that draft ordinance, and we will look forward to having that meeting. Uh, also, I'll be sending something out with my manager's report this week regarding scheduling the exact date and time for our first budget meeting for that, within that first full week of April. So please look at that and get back with me about what dates work best for you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Uh, in lieu of that Holly Hills going south, um, I'm curious as to how we're going to get the sidewalk over at Langen's property at eight twenty-five West Lake put in. Any ideas?
I did have discussions with our planner regarding that because there were, there was some confusion regarding whether they felt that it was their, um, requirement within the ordinance or the requirement within the plan review on whether they had to put that, um, sidewalk in across the, the front of the property as well as the side. We do know that they did deposits or they were, was a deposit and written in about extending that sidewalk all the way down to the trail, so that would still continue. Uh, but I'll try to get you some more information.
Yeah, this, I mean, this has been kind of an ongoing discussion for a while.
Right.
It's an absolute necessity that that needs to get taken care of, so, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious if you've, uh, had any contact with the, uh, officials in Lyon Township following their discussion of the, uh, uh, crosswalk at Marjorie Anne and Pontiac Trail?
Uh, yes, I was contacted by them based upon a meeting that they had where they wanted to move forward with the, um, crossings, uh, on Pontiac Trail by Marjorie Anne. We had already, uh, budgeted money for this year, within this year's budget. But now we're working on the potential details about when that would exactly be installed and what exactly the design was due to the fact that the schools are not particip- participating. And it's not the full design of the crosswalks that would go all the way to the school. So I'm still awaiting, uh, conversations regarding that. We'll have an updated meeting, I believe, still, uh, probably within the next week to talk about that design and the cost and how the time, what the timeframe is for moving that forward.
Sounds good, appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Paul, um, I, today was a gorgeous day. Um, I was outside, of course, and was in the parks, uh, so I had an opportunity to get out and talk to some people. Uh, just wanted to know, uh, do you have a status on the handicap swing over in McCaddy Park?
Yes, the board at the last meeting met with, um, or the commission, I'm speaking of the Parks and Rec Commission, met with, uh, supplier as well as the, uh, original family, uh, members who initiated the whole, uh, request for the handicaps wing. Uh, they did decide on that particular item and they are going to be moving forward with that purchase. Uh, we're going to be getting the details on, or from the supplier on the requirements for the bedding of that particular equipment because it's a specific type of, um, handicap accessible piece of equipment that requires a certain sort of surfacing. And the location that was that they were deciding on putting it was the southwest portion of where that playground is between the two, uh, water buildings. And so at the planning commi- or at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on this Wednesday, they'll be discussing more details regarding that swing.
Is there any way you could, um, put a timetable on that and have that in before May sometime? I think this whole COVID thing has been difficult for everybody. But I think you need to talk to somebody who has an impaired child. And I think you'll see that the plight of COVID has been devastating for these children. Uh, they barely understand where they are in this world. And then to be put in an environment, a lockup, that senseless lockup that has just devastated our youth is, is horrible. So I think there is an urgency in getting that in. And I, and I think there are more parents in this city that have children that would use that than, than just the one. I don't know who the one is over talking to the Parks and Recs. But I do know the people that have approached me and, and the woman who introduced herself to me today. Uh, it's just, it, it's imperative that this gets in. I, I think the time has come and gone for the city saying it'll get done. I think I need to hear it will be done by Memorial Weekend.
So I, I, I can't comment on whether that will be done or not. I, I, I do, do not know the time for supply of getting that equipment in. Uh, what I will tell you is that, well, I will get that to you by the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Paul, you had alluded to the schools not participating in the crosswalk thing. And it sounded as though you were suggesting there were many crosswalks beside the Marjorie Anne thing that we were trying to address.
Well, there's, I, I've had several meetings and talking with the township regarding sidewalk, um, pieces that are missing through, throughout the city. And this one that's, we're looking at a Marjorie Anne, the whole safe routes to school did encompass not only crossing of Marjorie Anne, crossing of Pontiac Trail and running the sidewalk down, all the way down Marjorie Anne to, to the school. Uh, but to the fact that we're not going to be getting funding for a safe route to school. And I, I don't want to overuse this statement, but it's, it's, it's an almost safe route to school because it's only doing the crosswalk, it's not running it all the way down the street. So that's why, um, the school and everybody else had not participated in it. That, that brought the price up, obviously, I think, you know, several, several hundred thousand dollars to get it done. So the importance was what can we get done? And I think discussing this last year during the budget process, so it's trying to get a crosswalk so individuals could go to the grade school as well as to the middle school at a safe location on Pontiac Trail.
Yes, I, I think the crosswalk is the principal concern, but, um, all, all of us were really disturbed by the fact that the schools ended up getting what they wanted and then bailed on the rest of a s- safe routes to schools project. That was pretty disturbing, so, okay. I thought maybe you were talking about some of the, like, the Princeton crossing or something. If you're alluding to crosswalks in those areas. So it makes sense with the Marjorie Anne sidewalk being the part you were talking about. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for city manager Zellnick this evening? Okay, thanks, Paul. We'll move on to council comments this evening, and we'll start with council member Dilg.
Oh, all right. Uh, I just have a couple of things. Uh, I just want to thank all the members of the commissions and boards that were reappointed tonight for their commitment to the city, really appreciate, um, the hard work they put in. It's can be a thankless job sometimes, so really appreciate people hanging in there and serving the city. And I just wanted to say happy International Women's Day to all of my strong, intelligent colleagues on this council, on this call, and the women who work for our city. Just want to say thank you for everything that you do, very much appreciated. Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you, council member Dilg. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of items tonight. Uh, first off, I'd like to wish council member Kibble a happy birthday. I hope he had a great day today and that he enjoyed spending his evening with us tonight. Secondly, I want to congratulate, uh, Karen Hatch, who won the gift card to the Coral Sash as part of the, uh, recent Show Your Love for Lion Shop Local Dine Local Bingo Contest. Uh, our businesses are still struggling, so please remember to shop local and dine local. It truly means the world to each of our business owners in the community. And finally tonight, I want to let everyone know about the upcoming annual creek cleanup event in South Lyon. The event will be held on Sunday, April 18th, uh, from nine AM to one PM. Uh, you're gonna, uh, you can muster at the, uh, Michigan Seamless Two parking lot, 400 McMunce Street. Uh, dress warm, bring a pair of boots and gloves, and we'll see you on Sunday morning, uh, April 18th to help, uh, clean up the waterways. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to let everybody know that I am continuing to work behind the scenes to, uh, work with individuals, including state legislatures, to encourage the governor to continue to open up our restaurants in the state of Michigan. Uh, that I was not able to be at the, uh, meeting on Monday, the joint meeting, because I was with the group in which we, uh, may be moving forward with some, uh, litigation in order to continue to put pressure on the governor to get rid of the senseless lockdown and get these businesses open. I had an opportunity to be in Frankamouth, uh, last week, and it is devastating. Devastating what has happened to the Burks Run Center, devastating. Uh, it's doubtful that there will be a, a recovery for them. Um, the downtown seemed to be holding up okay, but, um, they were no different than South Lyon. There's struggle everywhere. And when people don't have their businesses, they don't have their jobs. When they don't have their jobs, they can't make the mortgage payment, the car payment, we all know that story. So I would encourage everybody to contact your legislatures and tell them to please lobby the governor and get our state open. Uh, next, I would like to, uh, remind everybody to step off at St. Joe's on Friday for other fish fry. Uh, four to seven, it's great. I saw a lot of people there from the community. Saw our commissioner, uh, the wiper, he, he arrives around twenty-five after five. So if you want to talk to Phil and say hi to him and his wonderful wife Pam, uh, you do that also. Just want to let you know real quick, there's some new COVID products that are coming out that are great. Um, I'm starting to use them. One is a product out by Tide. It's a fabric, uh, spray that you can put on. So when I am out grocery shopping or at church or out in a, a store in town, when I come home, I just sprayed on my clothes. It acts as a sanitizer, uh, for fabric. So that is out there, apparently, police departments and, um, HBAs, ambulances are using it to spray on the beds and in their cars, in the back part of their cars when they're transporting people. This is a new, nice new product that's out. Armor All is going to be coming out with a similar product that you can use in your car and your car seats. And, um, a new product I'm going to be trying in the next couple of weeks is by Sherwin-Williams. Sherwin-Williams now has a paint that you can put on your walls that has an antimicrobial in it that will last for about four years. So if you have a house with a lot of traffic, um, I do when things are going okay. Uh, people's hands are everywhere, so this, uh, antibacterial is in the paint. And so it will keep germs and whatever from sticking to the walls. And so it's one more thing to add to the arsenal. Thank you very much, everybody. It's only about, let me see, twelve more days until spring, so hang in, we're through the worst of it. Good night.
Thank you, council member Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I actually want to reiterate what, um, council member Kurtzwell was saying about the handicap swing. I also was approached about when it was going to be put in, so she took my comments right out of my mouth. I was almost shocked, but, um, so if we could really put a little pressure on getting that done sooner than later, I think that a lot of families would appreciate to see that out there. Other than that, I don't have anything. Be safe, enjoy your evenings, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, council member Walton. And council member Kibble, happy birthday, council member.
Thank you, sir.
And thanks, Steve, for, for throwing me under the bus there. Um, I was, I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed our, our meeting with the planning commission. I thought that it was constructive, we were able to accomplish some things. Uh, get better understanding of directions and things. I, I wish there had been a bit more participation. It was my understanding that planning had kind of been asked to simply be, um, observers of what was going on rather, rather than to try to interact too much about what was going on and just be supportive of the, the document. It, it, it wasn't as though it was a, uh, a slight, or I think that it impeded us from being able to come to good decisions or anything. But I, I would have liked to have had a little bit more of their participation, just to get a sense that they were really proud of what they had come up with and so. Um, with that, I'd just like to say, if you are concerned about your health, the idea of wearing a mask is still an enormously valuable thing to do. I'm hoping everybody, no one is being brow beaten into thinking that, um, there are no threat by being involved in, um, in gatherings and things of that nature. So, um, just use your own common sense. You don't need to be muscled into taking somebody else's, uh, particular advice, so. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, council member Kibble. I just have two brief things, but they're both incredibly important, so. Um, I want to thank all the incredibly strong women at the city of South Lyon and those that are in my life. And I hope you all have an incredibly, uh, great International Women's Day. And to all of you on the board here too as well, and our commissions and boards. Um, it can be a thankless job, but it's a pleasure and really a privilege to be able to work with all of you. Um, to go back to kind of Chief, um, Vogel's confusion in anger and frustration going on here in the community about the, um, vaccinations. Um, I hear you. Uh, I'm getting calls from folks that don't understand how our local governments work, but they have a South Lyon mailing address and they are frustrated. I get you, I hear you too, um, you know. So if you live in South Lyon or have a South Lyon mailing address and you are having issues, whether it be Livingston County, um, basically it's for South Lyon mail addresses outside the city. Um, I would encourage you, if you're struggling at the county level, to try the Rite Aid and the Rite Aid chain. Um, that is slowly starting to roll out here. My eighty-two-year-old grandmother was able to go to Rite Aid this week and get her first shot. I know there's been a lot of frustration with that. To those folks that live in Oakland County or the city proper, I signed up through the county at the Save My Spot. I went for my second shot this weekend. To explain to you the difference between my first shot and the second shot is trying to describe the difference between day and night. These folks are getting it, they are doing better, they are going faster. Um, and so if you are looking and getting frustrated, those are a couple of options that I would encourage you to try and keep up the good fight on. If I hear anything that can, that can help, uh, this, the, the vaccinations get out there faster for those of you that are looking for it, I will certainly do everything in my power to get that information out to everyone. So, um, that's it for my comments this evening. I normally would look for a motion to adjourn, but this evening I will be entertaining a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move to go into a closed session pursuant to section eight E of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending litigation in Alexander's versus city of South Lyon. And that's an Oakland County Circuit Court case two zero one nine CZ.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, city clerk Deaton, would you mind leading us in a roll call vote for that?
Uh, Dilg?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Hellchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. So, city attorney Hamami, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just for the benefit of the public, um, we are going to be returning after closed session. Um, there, there may be action, there may not be any action.
Um, there, there may be action, there may not be any action, likely no action, at which point then the, um, city will likely adjourn the meeting.
Thank you so much. I. Is for those of you that are in the meeting, please feel free to wait in the waiting room, and if there is action, we will come back to a live meeting, and we'll overcome that to live again. So, um, sorry for that.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for one more person to exit. Okay, we should be outside now.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, um, Matthew, always great to see you. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and just give you the floor, my friend.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lisa, are we still recording?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Very catchy. Um, Paul, thank you. City Clerk Deaton, let us know when we're good to go.
I started the recording again, and there's nobody in the waiting room, so either way, we can move forward.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with the mayor-like, um, um, uh, motion to adjourn.
Please.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great night, all. Thanks again, Matt.
Thank you, good night.
Night.